Wednesday, May 7th, 2014. Can I have the roll call, please?
Salem Derby.
President.
Dan Hagan.
President.
Jennifer Hayes.
Yep.
JP Kuzinski.
Here.
Joe McCoy.
Here.
Dan Rist.
Here.
Mara Smith.
Here.
Joy Winnie.
Here.
Nathan Ziegler.
Present. Can we all please take off the Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Could I have a motion for the approval of the minutes? So moved. April 16th?
Second.
A motion, a second, for approval of the minutes, April 16th. All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstain? On the sentence, no? Okay, oh, motion passes. Public speak time. If there's anyone here from the public who would like to address the council for something other than what's on the public's hearing, please come to the podium and state your name, address. Okay, not seeing any. We can move on. Communications from elected officials, boards committees, and correspondents. I see none. And we don't have the mayor with us tonight. Melissa, do you have anything from the mayor? Or? No. Okay, so there'll be no mayor correspondence. Already on the standing committees. Rules of government, relations, councillor Rist.
Yes, Mr. President. I think I'll take this moment to move the auditors' report to committee. And as I spoke before, we all received this report. It's not on our agenda, but it is a report that duplicates a management issue that came up last year. So having spoken to the president and the finance director, we decided since it was a management issue, I'd like to move this report in the form of a motion to the Rules Committee for Review.
No second? Okay, it was a motion, a second, to move the recent auditor review, auditor report to the rules and regulations. I mean typically, that is obviously finance-related, but in this case, finance has a significant amount of work, and I think Rules is certainly capable of reviewing the, some of the changes or comments that were made. So a motion, a second, that all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, abstaining? Motion passes.
Concludes. Thank you.
Thank you. Finance, councillor Hagan.
Yes, obviously, we have several finance items that'll be on public hearing tonight, as they're on the agenda. And I believe there's one, two, three, four, five, six of them. Also, moving forward, our next meeting, the next meetings for finance will be as follows, because we're going to take up the budget. We'll be meeting, our next time will be May 14th at 6:00 PM in Room 1, in which we'll take up the following sections of the budget: general government, employee benefits, and community preservation. And then on May 27th, which is a Tuesday, we'll be taking up education, culture and recreation, debt and interest, and enterprise. And then on Wednesday, the 28th, we'll be taking up public safety, public works, human services, and then going over the summary and estimated income proposals. So those will be our next meeting. I also have several new items that will be later in the report, but right now, I would like to set two public hearings, a matter that's been before the committee. I'd like to set a public hearing for the $15,000 appropriation from CPA funds for historic preservation of records for our next meeting, which I believe is May 21st. And I'll make that in the form of a motion.
Second? Okay, we have a motion for a set of public hearing on May 21st. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, abstaining? Motion passes.
And the second public hearing I'd like to set is an interdepartmental transfer for $7,000 for a shortfall in building operations and miscellaneous technical services also for May 21st.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion, a second, for the set of that, I'm sorry, what was the amount?
Seven thousand.
Seven thousand dollars, public hearing on May 21st. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion passes.
And there'll be a few more public hearings set at the new business.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to public safety, councillor Hayes.
Thank you, Mr. President. The subcommittee had met and hoped to finalize the discussion on the acceptance of Willow Circle and Autumn Drive, but there's a couple of other additional issues to be resolved before a final subcommittee vote can be taken. And we assume we're going to be able to take care of those at our next meeting. I would however like to offer the public the opportunity to speak to the issue.
Yeah, we'll do that when the public hearing is open.
So we met on the 29th, and we discussed the approval of Autumn Drive and Willow Circle, the issues relating to the stoplight placement at the intersection of Highland Ave and Route 10, and discussion relating to the procedure for street acceptances. And we will be meeting again on May 16th at 6:00 PM in Conference Room 1, I believe?
Yep.
And the agenda will include discussion, continued discussion on the acceptance of Willow and Autumn, and the issues relating to the stoplight placement at the intersection of Highland Ave and Route 10. Thus concludes.
Thank you very much. Appointments, councillor Winnie.
I have no report for you tonight. I do have one, two new appointments to go down to Appointment Subcommittee. If you'd like me to do that now, I could.
I think just in order to use some time, we'll go very slowly through this, so we'll come back to it.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Ordinance, councillor Derby.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to announce that our next meeting is going to be next Wednesday, May 14th at 6:00 PM in Conference Room A, where we will again take up the discussion of the Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2002. And we're going to look at the possibility of rezoning the Parsons Street School property to create the whole building as neighborhood business instead of neighborhood business going up to the front door. And I also would like to request in the form of a motion a 90-day extension to the Chapter 2 Acts of 2002 issue.
Second? Okay, we have a motion, a second, for a 90-day extension for the request to adopt Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2002. Any additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, abstaining? Motion passes.
That concludes.
Thank you very much. Property, councillor Ziegler.
Thank you. We last met on April 24th and continue the discussion on the disposal of the Parsons Street School property. Additionally, I think everybody received a copy from city planner Jessica Allen tonight on some recommendations, and you haven't had a chance to.
We did.
Thoroughly. I believe they were in your box downstairs. So they might not have been on that.
You know what? I just picked up the mine, and I did. I read through everything, so.
Did everyone get that?
I don't think we did.
Right, it might have been, I've read the email at home, and then she may have just provided to the property Subcommittee. JP, did you receive a copy?
It was sent this afternoon.
Oh, okay, that's fine. May I request that everybody get one? We will review that memo as soon as we have the opportunity. We would like to set our next meeting for June 5th at 6:00 PM downstairs, and that concludes. And I'm sorry, the purpose of that meeting, again, is to dispose of, or consider the disposal of Parsons Street School property. It's the only item on our.
Right. Great, thank you. Okay, councillor Rist.
Councillor Ziegler, if you can just send us an email copy, it would be fine.
Sure.
You don't have to rely on a planner.
Well, I can.
You'd have to scan it. You don't have the digital.
I can, I'll forward it to you.
Okay.
Forward the email. We just got it, again, probably about an hour ago.
Oh, okay. Just very recent. Okay, we have no old business, so we can move to new business, mayoral appointments.
Okay, then. We have two mayoral appointments. Put this in the form of a motion, that they may be moved to Appointment Subcommittee.
Yes, for the, both appointments as.
For both appointments.
Okay, Appointment Subcommittee. Is there a second on that?
Second.
Okay, a motion, a second, to move those to Appointment Subcommittee. Any additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion passes.
Yes, and our next meeting will be for May 21st. And because we have one of the appointments, which is for the licensing board, may become rather lengthy, I'm going to set the Appointment Subcommittee meeting for 5:15 downstairs.
5:15, you said?
5:15.
You got Conference Room B.
Conference Room B, thank you.
Moving on to new business, I believe it's ordinance, councillor Derby.
I think it's actually, this is one.
I'm going to let finance. We just discussed that.
It's an ordinance amendment, but it's a financial issue, so I make in the form of a motion that the change of Exhibit B on the classification and pay plan be sent to the finance Subcommittee for Review.
Second? Okay, we have a motion, a second, to move the Exhibit B, Classification and Pay Plan, to finance. Any additional comments or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, abstaining? Motion passes.
And I have a few first readings. I'll do them one at a time. First item is first reading for an interdepartmental transfer dated April 28th, 2014. Request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriation. The amount requested is $3,974. It'll be transferred from the reserve fund, and that amount to be transferred to the mayor's full-time clerical, $3,974. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose: to provide funds for a shortfall in personnel services.
Do you want us to individually, or?
I'll do them individually tonight. I'd request that this be sent to the finance Subcommittee for Review.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, to move the $3,974 to finance for review. Any additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, abstaining? Motion passes.
And on this matter, in the form of a motion, I'd also like to set a public hearing on this matter for our meeting on May 21st.
Is there a second for that?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, to establish a public hearing on May 21st for the $3,974. Any additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, abstaining? Motion passes.
Our second item under new business is another interdepartmental transfer dated April 24th, 2014. The amount requested is $4,000, and it's to be transferred from the reserve fund in that amount, and transferred to the ambulance professional services in the amount of $4,000. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose: to provide shortfalls for the, excuse me, to provide funds for the shortfall to medical billing services. And I'd request this be sent to finance.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, to move the $4,000 for shortfall in medical billing services to finance. Any additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, abstaining? Motion passes.
I'd also, on this matter, like to request a public hearing be set for our May 21st meeting, and I'll make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion for a public hearing for the $4,000 shortfall medical billing, create a public hearing on May 21st. Any additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, abstaining? Motion passes.
Our third item tonight is a supplemental appropriation request, and I'll do a first reading dated April 28th, 2014. Request is hereby made for the approval of the following appropriation. The amount requested is $18,000, and would be appropriated from the enterprise retained earnings in that amount, $18,000, and appropriated to the wastewater overtime. Amount requested will be used for the following purpose: to fund an expected shortfall in wastewater personnel services.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, to move the $18,000 fund to expected shortfall in wastewater personal services to finance. Any additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, abstaining? Motion passes.
Also on this supplemental appropriation of $18,000, I request that we set a public hearing for the May 21st meeting.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, for a public hearing for the $18,000 wastewater personnel services expense. May 21st, public hearing. Any additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, abstaining? Motion passes. You keep going.
Next one is a supplemental appropriation request dated April 28th. Request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriation. Amount requested, $21,400, to be appropriated from enterprise retained earnings, and appropriated to water and water pipe and fittings in that amount, $21,400. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose: to fund the repair of a water main on Pomeroy Street. And I'll make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
A motion, a second, to move the $21,400 for repair of the water main on Pomeroy Street to finance. Any additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, abstaining? Motion passes.
And I'd also like to make a second request that a public hearing be set on this matter for our May 21st meeting.
Second.
Okay, a motion, a second, for a public hearing for that same $21,400 appropriation on May 21st, 6:15 PM these chambers. Any additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, abstaining? Motion passes.
These I don't have public hearing.
Okay, good.
Also, a new one is a supplemental appropriation as follows, April 28th, 2014. And I can do the next two together. Request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriation. The amount is $30,000, and it's to be appropriated from the enterprise retained earnings in that amount, $30,000, and appropriated to water capital purchase, $30,000. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose: to fund capital purpose, excuse me, capital purchase of a right-angle gear drive for the Non-Ituck Park Water Pumping Station. And I will also do a second supplemental appropriation dated April 28th, 2014. Request is hereby made for the following appropriation. The amount requested is $98,000, and is to be appropriated from the stabilization fund in that amount, $28, excuse me, $98,000, and appropriated to the following: police prior year retro, $30,000; full-time regular retro, $49,000; incentive, $4,000; holiday, $3,000; court, $1,000; officer in charge, $500; all overtime accounts, $10,000; vacation and sick out, excuse me, vacation, sick payout, $500, for a total of $68,000 plus the $30,000 for prior retro for that figure of $98,000. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose: to provide retro funds for the police contract. And I'd like both of those items sent to finance for review.
Second? We have a motion, a second, to move the $30,000 and the $98,000 appropriations to finance. Any additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, abstaining? Motion passes. I'll entertain a motion to.
That's it.
Entertain a motion to open public hearings?
So moved.
Is there a second on that?
Second.
Open public hearings, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, abstaining? Public hearing is open. I'm going to go a little bit out of order again, just because we'll probably be continuing a public hearing, so the request to accept Willow Circle, Autumn Drive, councillor Hayes.
Thank you. So we had met, and we had hoped to have a decision, but we actually are going to meet again to discuss a couple more aspects of before we accept these street acceptances. But we would like to offer the public the opportunity to speak to the issue of the acceptance of these streets today.
Is there anyone here today who would like to speak to the issue of the acceptance of Autumn Circle Willow Lane? Not being seen, okay. I'll entertain a motion, councillor Hayes.
I would move to continue the public hearing for the acceptance of Willow Circle and Autumn Drive Wednesday, June 4th at 6:15 in these chambers.
It has to be June 4th? We have the budget done.
It has to be what?
No, he was just saying the date, because that is our budget review.
You can't make it to May 21st.
Yeah, it's probably, yeah. We can stay the way you are. So we have a motion to move, continue the public hearing to.
Wednesday, June 4th.
Wednesday, May, June 4th. These hearings in these chambers at 6:15 PM.
Second.
And there's a second? Any additional discussion on that? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, abstaining? Motion passes. Okay, so the continuing, the public hearing will be continued on the street acceptances. And now, I believe, once again, it's all finance. Councillor Hagan.
Our first public hearing on a finance issue is an interdepartmental transfer. I'll do a second reading. The amount requested is $11,700, and it's to be transferred from the reserve fund in that amount, and transferred to the fire vehicle repair, $11,700. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose: to provide funds for engine and ladder one repairs. I believe the fire chief is here this evening, and as the councillors may remember, we did authorize the appropriation for the ladder truck a couple of meetings ago, and as a result of it being in the shop, I believe some other issues were uncovered, and I'll, if it's okay with the chair, I'll ask the fire chief to come up and explain exactly what drew this fire.
Of course. Good evening, David Mott, our fire chief. As the councillor said, the truck went to, back to the manufacturer's service center in Albany, New York, and when they got it there, they found more than the annual scheduled repairs that were to be done. There was a lot of structural deficiencies. The cable that runs the 100-foot length, which was identified as being frayed at the base, ended up being two or three cracks in the casing, so the entire 100-foot length of that cable had to be replaced. It's electrical power in its cable, so it's a big cable, and because it's fiber, it was very expensive. Also, on the long trip, the driver on the return trip had a check engine light come on, and when it went to the local rep in Westfield, they found a bunch of sensors, because everything's computer-driven, and the estimate for to repair that, I believe, is $2,200, on top of the $8,000 just for the truck work that's going to be required.
Councillor Rist?
As this, you said it was already sent to the repair, has the repair been done?
Those repairs that are on that list in my request have not been completed yet.
So you have to send it back there? Oh, okay.
When I got the estimate, I knew I didn't have that kind of money left.
Maybe you could have a trailer back there.
Yeah.
Any questions, councillor Winnie?
What year is this ladder?
That is a 2008. Sadly, that's the newest piece of firefighting equipment we have.
Well, it's.
Councillor Rist, yeah?
It is a multi-hundred-thousand-dollar piece of equipment, isn't it?
It's a million-plus to replace it now, yes.
Yeah, so spending, whatever we're spending, 20 grand total is not a lot to talk about running, so.
I think on average, we've spent no more than the annual, it has, every year, the aerial device, the stick or the ladder, has to get serviced, inspected, and certified. That costs about $3,000. It's required, even though we're not an OSHA state, it's an OSHA requirement, it's an NFPA requirement. God forbid that ladder were to fail with somebody up there 100 feet. So we've only spent the $3,000, I think it's $3,500 a year for that work. All the other routine oil changes and stuff have been done by our mechanics and motor repair. So for a vehicle that is a million-plus, for us to be spending, you know, under $4,000 a year, we're doing pretty good.
Councillor Hagan?
Just a quick, the chief did appear before the finance committee, it was approved unanimously by the finance committee, and I know he's operating without his notes, but at the, at the thing, I believe, just to correct you, you said $2,200. I think the engine light was $2,800, and the others were $89, but I know you're operating.
I'm trying to think small.
And I know you were there, so, and we did go over that, so I just wanted to bring that on the public records.
Any more questions for the chief? Okay.
Thank you.
Councillor Hagan? Oh, yes, is there anyone else from the public who would like to address the council concerning that appropriation? Not being seen, okay. Councillor Hagan?
Okay, I'll make the following motion, that the full council approve the following interdepartmental request. The amount requested is one, excuse me, $11,700, to be transferred from the reserve fund to the fire vehicle repair, and that amount, $11,700. And the purpose of this would be to provide funds for the engine and ladder one repairs.
Second.
And then a second for the interdepartmental transfer of $11,700. Any additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, abstaining? Motion passes.
Our second public hearing tonight in a finance matter is a supplemental appropriation. I'll do a second reading dated March 26th, 2014. Request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriation. The amount requested is $10,000, and it's to be appropriated from the enterprise retained earnings fund, $10,000, appropriated to the wastewater treatment capital purchase, $10,000. And the amount requested will be used for the following following purpose: to fund the capital expense for the NPDES permit requirements. And I believe NPDES, uh, 'cause I had to ask this, stands for the National Pollution Discharge Elimination System. That said, I know, um, uh, someone's here representing, um, Public Works, I could go into a little, and I believe this is something that we need to have permitting for, uh, because of the waters discharged into the river, and all these permits, uh, have to be, it was, uh, we got a, uh, the contact was through Carl Williams, uh, that we have to check the, they have to check the sewer lines, manholes, catch basins, pump stations, uh, and these are all required to prevent us from being in violation of those permitting, uh, which could result in fines for the city, but I don't know if, um, uh, the business manager wants to add anything.
Nothing to add? Okay, Counselor Riss?
I'm sorry I wasn't at the meeting. Um, I note in the request that it talks about a sixty thousand dollar project, and then it might be broken down over two years.
Right.
Is this ten thousand simply to investigate what needs to be done?
Yes, this is just, I believe, to be the, it's gonna be the first step, and there is gonna be, uh-
There may be others needed.
Depending on the result of this, there could be additional items coming, depending what we may be in there.
And is this being done by an outside firm?
I-
Or us? Yes, thank you.
Okay, is there, uh, anyone from the public who would like to, uh, address the counsel concerning that appropriation? Please come to the podium. Not seeing any, I will accept a motion, Counselor Hagan.
I'll make the following motion, that the full council approve the supplemental appropriation request, and the amount of ten thousand dollars that will be appropriated from enterprise retained earnings, and appropriated to the wastewater trap, wastewater treatment plant capital purchase, and that amount, ten thousand, to fund the NPDES permit requirements.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion a second for the supplemental appropriation of ten thousand dollars for enterprise retained earnings to the wastewater treatment capital purchase. Any additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion passes.
Um, our third public hearing tonight involving a financial matter is as follows, and I'll do a second reading. It's a supplemental appropriation request dated from March twenty-six, twenty-fourteen, and the request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriation. The amount requested is fifteen thousand dollars, and would be appropriated from the enterprise retained earnings, and that amount, fifteen thousand, and appropriated to the wastewater treatment capital purchase, fifteen thousand. The amount requested would be for the following purpose: to fund the capital purchase to replace the gravity thickener pump. Um, before we ask for other things, I've given, this is a request made through Carl Williams, and it's our understanding, or at least it was our understanding at the hearing, and I believe myself, and, uh, President McCoy had to fill in, that there's basically two pumps that pump all this water. One had to be changed, I believe, last year, and this is a request to, uh, replace the second one, um, because the problem is, while the pump is running now, that there's, uh, replacement parts have to be, like, machined, uh, specially for it now, 'cause it's so outdated, they can't buy any type of, uh, of, of actual parts for it, and it's been estimated that they've been running about seven thousand a year for repairs on these pumps, and it's obviously, both pumps can't go down at the same time where we have a problem. So, uh, the request here is for the replacement of a second pump, and as I said, I believe we replaced, uh, the first one, uh, in last year, and I don't know if Patty has anything she wants to add, or if-
No, we have.
Okay. There's anyone from the public who would like to come to the podium and stress the counsel concerning that appropriation? Okay, not seeing, Counselor Hagan?
Okay, I'll make the following motion, that the council approve the supplemental appropriation as follows. The amount requested is fifteen thousand dollars, and it will be appropriated from the enterprise retained earnings, fifteen thousand appropriated to the wastewater treatment capital purchase, and the amount requested would be used for the following purpose: to fund the capital purchase to replace the gravity thickener pump.
Second.
Okay, a motion a second for the supplemental appropriation of fifteen thousand dollars for enterprise retained earnings to wastewater treatment capital purchase. Any additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion passes.
Our next matter of a financial nature is a supplemental appropriation as follows, and I'll do a second reading, dated March eleventh, twenty-fourteen. Request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriation. The amount requested is twenty-eight thousand dollars, and this should be appropriated from enterprise retained earnings, twenty-eight thousand dollars appropriated to the water capital purchase, twenty-eight thousand, and the amount requested would be used for the following purpose: to fund the capital purchase of a four-by-two pickup truck for the water department. This is a, uh, request from, uh, Superintendent Pechinsky. Apparently, they had a, uh, an old, I believe it was a Chevy S-ten, it was a small pickup that, uh, broke down, is out of service, and they've been, uh, utilizing a old police cruiser, uh, trying to haul things around, uh, and this is a request for a new, uh, vehicle. Uh, we did go over, uh, at the hearing, um, and, um, as to, and I, apparently, and I was aware of this, at least, uh, there's very few small pickups left that you can purchase, so this would actually be a full-size pickup, uh, which, actually, uh, the feeling was that it was really more appropriate, appropriate for the job to begin with, as the little one was always strained to, uh, carry the stuff, and certainly the police cruiser is strained carrying. Uh, there was, as we always do, look into gas mileage, uh, there is a V-eight engine involved in this, um, and Director Pechinsky did say that, given today, the V-eights are, are very similar in gas mileage to the V-sixes, and while, you know, so he felt that for, uh, the little bit extra, that you're probably gonna get a lifetime out of it, that he felt it was appropriate, as did the mayor, the mayor was also at that meeting and recommended this. Uh, again, I'll defer to Patty, if she has anything to add.
Okay, if there's anyone from the public who would, uh, want to address the counsel concerning that appropriation? Not seen, Counselor Hagan?
I'll make the following, uh, motion, uh, that the council approve the following supplemental appropriation dated March eleventh. The amount requested is for twenty-eight thousand dollars, and will be appropriated from the enterprise retained earnings, and appropriated to the water capital purchase, and the amount requested would be used for the following purpose: to fund the capital purchase of a four-by-two pickup truck for the water department.
Second.
Okay, a motion a second for, uh, twenty-eight thousand dollar supplemental appropriation from enterprise retained earnings for the water capital purchase. Any additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry, I didn't see that, Counselor-
I, I have one question, did you ask them if they looked at the state bid list for this?
This, this came off the, um, uh, this is one of the state-
This is from the state?
Yeah, this is the state bid list, uh, that's where it came from. I believe that in, uh, I know the mayor's, maybe Joe requires, I believe this was last year's, um, uh-
Pricing?
Pricing, and they, that's why they added, I believe, a little bit, uh, 'cause it came out to twenty-five seven, they added a little bit, 'cause they will have to get the next year's model, so they're, you know, they're hoping it stays within that, uh, with that, unless one of these older ones are available, but they don't believe that the older ones will be available, this is last year's.
Scott, do you have any more specifics on that?
You can't.
Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot this-
No, that's fine, no, that's my question, that's fine.
I have a question as well. Um, I recall the, that we had, um, a ruling that we should have as green as possible for vehicles, and I just would like more information about how that was examined with this, and I, I really don't know if pickup trucks are, are included in that or not, but-
Right. Uh, as I said a little bit before, we did inquire, because the old pickup was a smaller, um, you know, one of the, I believe it was a Chevy S-ten, which is a smaller, um, compact pickup, but they don't make, Ford or Chevy do not make a small pickup anymore, number one, uh, so it was a little more fuel-efficient, uh, but number two, I, I really got the feeling from the, uh, from Mr. Pechinsky, that a full-size pickup is really is what needed, and the committee that night, myself and, uh, Counselor McCoy, did ask him about, 'cause we were a little concerned about the V-eight engine, because that's really the only option, I believe diesel came up also, but they, um, they don't really, they like something that they can work on, I know they do a lot of the work themselves, so, uh, they wanted something they could work on, because we tend to keep our vehicles, uh, long after they're off warranty, as, as we see as they came on. So, we were really limited in what, you know, what we could get for a green, greener vehicle, so, but we did, it was an inquiry that was major to hearing, I don't know if you want to add anything?
No, that seems pretty, Counselor Derby, as I remember, that it was, you're, one of your ordinances, that was a recommendation to try to obtain, right, it wasn't, it has to be?
No, I mean, it was, it has to be.
Uh-huh.
Um, and it's, so, it should be the most fuel-efficient vehicle for the use, unless precluded by circumstances that are, um, you know, extenuating, like police vehicles and whatnot.
Yeah, and with DBW, I think, a lot of times, they're-
They're calling very heavy items.
What they have to do, precludes particularly very green. Any additional comments or questions from anyone concerning, oh, I think we all said that, it was already a second, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion passes. Counselors, please remember that, you know, uh, Scotten is here, so if you have any questions for her, we certainly can ask anything specific, or for Counselor Hagan as well, so.
Our next, uh, public hearing tonight is a supplemental request, uh, and I'll do a second reading dated March twenty-six. Request is hereby made for the following appropriation, and amount requested is sixty thousand dollars, and appropriated from, again, the enterprise retained earnings, and appropriated to the wastewater treatment capital purchase, and that amount, sixty thousand, the amount requested would be used for the following purpose: to fund the expense for pump station improvements. Uh, again, this was a, uh, request that was sent down through, uh, Mr. Williams, and, uh, in the subcommittee hearings, um, it was explained to us by Superintendent Pechinsky that there's basically, I believe he said eighteen different pumping stations around the city that keep, uh, all our wastewater, uh, moving through the system, and, uh, they're constantly in need of, uh, repairing old pumps and upgrades to panels, because the alternative, if everything breaks, or some, one of them breaks, is, is, is not good. So, this was just, uh, Mr. Williams, uh, needing to go around, they wanna reduce the electrical cost, I think they wanna do some, uh, 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 replace some worn, uh, pumps, but they also wanna upgrade some of the panels, which, uh, actually tell what's going on in the system, 'cause a lot of times now, I guess, they get, uh, they trigger alarm calls that turn out to be not, uh, not needed, and then we're, we're paying the overtime for people to come in, so they wanna upgrade of some of the electrical panels and some of the pumps that are getting worn out, and this is his estimate of what the cost to do that would be, and the, the life of the project would be about twenty-five years over, for what we can get out of that sixty thousand. Again, if anyone has any further questions for Mrs. Cotton, or-
Do you have anything additional to add to that, Miss Cotton? No?
No.
Okay, anyone from the public who would like to address that appropriation? Not seeing. I guess Counselor Hagan, we're ready for it.
I'll make the following motion, that, uh, the council approve the sup, following supplemental appropriation, amount requested is sixty thousand dollars, appropriated from enterprise earnings, and to the wastewater treatment capital purchase, for sixty thousand, and the amount requested would be used to fund capital expense of the pump station improvements.
Second.
Okay, we have a supplemental appro, motion a second for supplemental, supplemental appropriation of sixty thousand dollars from enterprise retained earnings to the wastewater treatment capital purchase, and the additional comments?
I have a question.
Counselor Hayes?
Um, our last meeting, we looked at the integrated water management plan, where we were doing a reading to borrow a significant amount of money to kind of inspect all of these pumps and systems and stuff like that. Is this something that, how, how does this dovetail with that?
Right, I believe it would be rated, related, but the, uh, what we approved at the last was for a comprehensive-
Study.
Study of the whole system, the, the water, the stormwater, the ground wa, I mean, the, you know, what, our water, plus the sewage, so this, you know, this is, you know, that is a, kind of a comprehensive study of the whole water system in East Hampton.
Yep.
Whereas this is very specific of keeping our wastewater pumping to the wastewater treatment plant, so, this is something that we have to, or at least the, uh, Public Works Department feels, or the Water Department feels, has to be done, has to be done right away.
That these are super-
That these are things that need to be addressed, uh, you know, the study could take quite a while, but the industry-
The study could take a while, okay, yeah, just making sure.
Yep, no, appreciate it.
Okay, then, any additional questions? Okay, uh, I believe it was, was there a second, yes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion passes.
Our final, uh, finance matter, related matter tonight is the following, and I'll do a second reading, supplemental appropriation dated March eleventh. Here, uh, request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriation. Amount requested is seventy-five thousand, and it should be appropriated from the enterprise retained earnings, and that amount, seventy-five thousand, appropriated to the water capital purchase, seventy-five thousand, and the amount requested would be used for the following purpose: to fund capital purchase of meter replacements. Um, this has been a ongoing, um-
Forever.
Yes, uh, I guess I can defer to Counselor Riss, or Winnie, I don't know how far back it goes, but Counselor Pechinsky, I know since I've been on, it's almost every year or so, we, we, they're slowly trying to upgrade the whole city so that water meters can be read, as they, they don't have to get out and inspect everyone's water meter, and they read by the street, which is gonna save a lot in the end for, uh, employees, and be much more efficient. Uh, also, uh, I believe these updated ones are, are much, uh, more reliable in, in reading, and it, it's not a, really a long, but I guess the problem is, is, as old ones go out of service, they replace them, so they don't catch up replacing ones that aren't broken, it's almost, I know, uh, this past year, mine had to be replaced, 'cause it started, uh, running, so they came in, it was, it was a very, you know, didn't take them long, maybe an hour or so, and they changed it. So, this is really an ongoing thing that we're doing, it's, hopefully, in the end, it's gonna, uh, be much more, uh, efficient in its measurement, and also in reducing the cost of employees, and, 'cause they can just drive down the street and read everybody's and-
Counselor Riss?
Two questions, uh, I'll give you an idea, I noticed in the report, uh, Mr. Newton says a hundred-and-fifty thousand, does that mean we might be caught up after two years?
Well, no.
Patty says no.
Wouldn't that be nice?
Well, it says a hundred and fifty.
Why does that seem optimistic?
Well, okay, so did they give you a sense of how long?
They didn't really, because, uh, as, as was, you know, I, as I kinda mentioned, it-
You have to start over then.
Yeah, you're kind of like, uh-
You're ongoing.
But we're not even, we're, they, they catch up, most of these ones that we purchase, I believe, are going into ones that are breaking down as the year goes on, they don't change all that many new ones, uh-
Sometimes we are.
Uh, you are getting some of them done, but-
Unless we've got all the new buildings-
Right.
And the large meters are over four thousand dollars a piece, we haven't had money in two years.
Yeah, actually, if you, just for our record, if you don't mind coming up and just say it, and, thank you.
I think it's gonna be a never-ending. It's our only source of income to send out the bills, so if they don't work, and we, we're already seeing, like, if they're in there fifteen, twenty years, sometimes they go out, that's about the life expectancy of a meter, it's about twenty years, and right now, we've got fifty-seven hundred meters approximately, and four thousand of them are radio, so we've got sixteen hundred of them that are still the old-style walk-up read, so every time we replace, it's two hundred dollars, and sometimes it's just pieces that we're replacing.
Are you replacing, did I hear you say you're replacing some of the radio ones as well, because they're breaking up?
The radios are already going dead, batteries are dead.
Okay.
Can you replace the batteries? Do you have to replace the-
It's a packet. I think the packet's about a hundred dollars.
Oy.
So, the unit stays, the packet gets changed?
The radio read will get changed, not the meter itself.
Well, damn.
That's a little-
We've been going for others for forty years.
The whole, the whole, the whole, uh, package, the package and the meter itself, that's what you put in a new installation for the-
Is about two hundred.
Swapping out an old one is about two hundred, the batteries are about a hundred.
No, that includes the, that's the radio, and then if you do the other one, yes.
If you do part, just, just the radio part, it's about a hundred.
Correct.
Well, based on those numbers, you're changing a lot of meters.
Well, and then we've got the new condos going in on Parsons, so, that's a lot of meters going in there, so, new construction.
Yeah.
We've got that too, so that stays on top of what we already have, so as I said, the large meters are a lot of money, so four thousand dollars for one meter, kind of beats up the budget.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Riss?
Uh, unrelated to this specific appropriation, I note that we're spending a hundred-and-eighty-nine thousand dollars out of retained earnings, do you know what that leaves us with, either of you or Melissa? How we, is that gonna give us? Retained earnings being, if I remember, is the stabilization fund of water-
Yeah, we're pretty good, that, after, if they've, well, yes, all those. Four hundred and ninety-three thousand left after.
Thank you, that's good.
When you do a new construction, isn't there a tie-in charge or?
One thousand two fifty.
One thousand two fifty?
Per service.
For like a regular residence?
Right.
On a commercial site?
It depends, it's one thousand two fifty if it's a regular line, if they want a main, it's two thousand five hundred.
Mm-hmm. So, that, that covers the cost of excavating the, any excavations, or just the tie-in?
That's just to give them the right to tie-in to our service.
Right to tie-in.
But that's a one-time fee, we'll never get it again, so the one-time fees are what we're supposed to be paying for our capital, but each year they get lower, 'cause there's not as much construction.
Right.
Counselor Hayes?
I'm sorry, we haven't met, I'm not sure who you're with.
I'm sorry, Patty Cotton, office manager for the DBW.
Okay, great.
And Joe is supposed to be here, but we have an emergency up on Glendale.
Okay.
Jeez.
Counsel Winnie.